The June 11th, 2020 meeting of the Parker Planning Commission, we'll call it to order at 7:00 PM. Will you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? John?
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John.
I tried to stand up, my headphones pulled out.
All right, roll call, Eliana.
Present.
Susan.
Present.
Rich. Rich? I can see him.
Sorry, I'm here.
Okay. Eric?
He's connecting to audio.
Oh.
Oh, Eric is here, okay.
Okay. John?
Here.
Tracy? Ruth Ann?
Here.
Gary Poole here. Kim?
Here.
All right. So Eric is connecting?
Yeah, so Susan, we, you won't be seated, okay?
Okay, that's fine.
All right.
Thank you.
Hi, Eric.
Hi, guys. Sorry, Susan. I was having technical difficulties.
That's all right. All right, are there any additions to our deletions from the agenda?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay. The approval of the minutes, are there any additions to or corrections to the May 28th, 2020 meeting minutes?
No, sir.
Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the May 28th, 2020 meeting minutes.
I'll second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Rich, that we approve the minutes from the May 28th, 2020 meeting. I will call the roll. Eliana? Hello? Yes, no?
Eliana, she's muted.
Oh. Eliana? Vote? I'll come back. Rich?
I agree. I.
Okay. Rich?
Yes?
Eric?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Ruth Ann?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes are approved. The item number six on our agenda is a public hearing on the Parker and Pine rezone and minor development plat. So we will open the public hearing at 7:03. And Carolyn, it's, we're all yours.
Okeydoke. Do we have the presentation?
There we go.
There we go. So, good evening, Commissioners and Chairman. This evening, we, the applicant will be requesting a rezone and replat of a portion of the Parker Auto Plaza subdivision. The applicant is Kim Lee Horn, and the representative is Dan Skehan. The applicant is present to answer any questions the Commissioners might have, and will also have a presentation of their own following staff's report. The applicant has demonstrated that all public notice requirements have been met. Slide, sorry. The site is located on the southwest corner of Parker Road and Pine Lane. The applicant is proposing to rezone and replat Parker Auto Plaza filing 1, Block 3, Lot 1. The proposal will delete the subject property from the Parker Auto Plaza Plan Development, or PD, and create a new PD called Parker and Pine Mixed-Use Development. The property will be replatted into Parker and Pine Minor Development. Slide, please. This map illustrates the proposed uses. The purple shaded areas shown here are the commercial areas, while the blue shaded area is the multifamily tract. The current PD contains building setback criteria that hinder the development of this very important corner. The proposed PD has new setback requirements that better align with the town's new development design standards. Additionally, the current PD does not permit residential uses. The new PD will update the list of permitted commercial uses to accommodate and promote retail, restaurant, and service uses, and will also establish development design standards enforceable through an Architectural Control Committee and the Town Site Plan Process. These development standards complement the town design standards and ensure cohesiveness and compatibility throughout the development. The multifamily residential component represents less than one half of the property and is located adjacent to the Baldwin Gulch Trail and open space. The project provides an alternative dwelling type that will maintain housing options in Parker by meeting the needs of a wide range of population, including young families, professionals, and seniors. A mix of commercial and residential uses, the mix, I'm sorry, of commercial and residential uses is a good example of the mixed-use concept and will encourage activation of the site and help to create a strong presence along these two roadways. This PD is designed to provide a balance of uses and trade-offs that promote higher-quality commercial use along Parker Road, preclude some of the inappropriate uses currently permitted by the Parker Auto Plaza PD, and support mixed-use development in the 20-mile road corridor, which is an emerging mixed-use area. Slide, please. The property is located at the intersection of Parker Road and Pine Lane, providing excellent connections to major transportation corridors, such as E-470 and Parker Road. Access into the development will be provided from existing access points on Parker Road, Pine Lane, and 20-mile road, creating a north-south-east-west grid, traffic grid, for efficient and safe circulation within the development. The Minor Development Plat, or MDP, will create six commercial lots and one tract, Tract A, which is intended for future multifamily development. The tract includes the internal roadway network that will serve both the commercial lots and the multifamily development. These private roads will provide vehicular and pedestrian connectivity between uses and will be maintained by the Owners Association. Slide, please. The site contains 15.925 acres and is currently vacant. There are no existing 100-year floodplains or existing creeks or gulches within the boundaries of the development. Connectivity to the local and regional trail system is directly adjacent via Baldwin Gulch Trail, shown here in red. Per the Subdivision Improvement Agreement, or SIA, a pedestrian connection to Baldwin Gulch Trail is required within Tract A. That's the multifamily tract. The specific location will be determined at time of site plan, but will likely be located within the area highlighted here in yellow. The development is located adjacent to an improved bus stop shown here in the inset. This stop is in close proximity to E-470 and town commercial areas, supporting alternative transportation services, as is recommended in the master plan. Slide, please. Adjacent properties are either currently in commercial use or are vacant properties zoned for commercial use. There are nearby multifamily residential uses, including both existing development further west on Pine Lane, which you can see in this map, and new development that is under construction directly northwest of the property. Slide, please. The site is located within the central commercial district character area of the master plan. The master plan recommends that, due to its central location, growth in this character area should focus on core retail, services, offices, lodging, restaurants, entertainment, and, to a lesser extent, higher-density residential uses as a part of a development with a mix of uses and a design that focuses on vehicular and pedestrian connectivity. The proposed rezone is consistent with the master plan recommendations for land use in the central commercial district. Slide, please. In conclusion, the uses, density, and overall design considerations recommended for the central commercial district are consistent with the proposed PD and with the nine approval criteria for rezoning requests. The applicant has demonstrated compliance with the requirements of Land Development Ordinance and all other relevant regulatory documents for a minor development plat. Slide, please. The applicant is requesting a rezone that will include commercial uses and add multifamily residential as an allowed use. Additionally, a minor development plat will create six commercial lots and one tract. The applicant has demonstrated that the proposal is consistent with the master plan and is compliant with the Land Development Ordinance for a minor development plat. Therefore, staff is recommending that Planning Commission recommend approval for the Parker and Pine Mixed-Use Development and Plan with no conditions, and the Parker and Pine Minor Development with a single condition that will ensure the satisfaction of a few minor technical elements for engineering. That condition reads as follows. Prior to recordation, the applicant will satisfy all engineering comments related to SUB-18-020. This concludes staff's report. In the interest of efficiency and with the Commissioner's permission, staff will return to questions after the applicant has completed their presentation. Thank you.
Okay, that sounds fine, Carolyn. Is the applicant ready for their presentation? Rosemary, somebody?
Yes.
Okay.
Who will be speaking first, please?
Good evening, Commissioners, this is Ryan Amato.
Hello, Ryan.
Good evening. Amato is spelled A-M-A-T-O. We have an address of 2710 East Camelback Road in Phoenix, Arizona. I'm here tonight to represent EBT Parker, Colorado, care of Eisenberg Company.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Little background, we are a commercial development company that focuses on sustainable mixed-use projects that are aligned with the goals of the community. In the Denver metro area, we currently have developed and owned developments in Broomfield, Jefferson County, Aurora, and Parker. We pride ourselves on considering ideas and comments from residents and municipalities and integrating those ideas into our plans in order to create neighborhoods that reflect the character and sense of place of the community. Let's see here, do we have a slide? Let me go to the next slide here, please. So I'm joined tonight by my team, Dan Skehan, civil engineer with Kim Lee Horn, Bill Maher is a planner with Norris Design, Jordan Bonacelli with Naos is our architect, and Thomas Raganetti of Otten Johnson is our zoning advisor. So first of all, I would like to thank the Town of Parker staff for their assistance throughout this project, specifically Carolyn Parkinson and Bryce Matthews. As you all know, we've been working with the Town of Parker staff for over, little over three years to refine this development application in order to align with the policies and goals of the Town of Parker. We own a highly visible site at the intersection of Parker and Pine that has been zoned for 20-plus years for large-scale uses such as automotive sales. The site has remained vacant even with the presence of surrounding development, infrastructure, and roads, which has resulted in a site that is not effectively contributing to the tax base of the Town of Parker or improving the appeal of Parker Road. And so through discussion with staff, through many discussions with staff, a mixed-use approach to the site was brought forth for consideration for the addition of multifamily uses, which is consistent with, as Carolyn alluded to, the emerging multifamily developments that have recently been approved at the north across Pine Lane. Our mix of retail and residential uses, we feel is compatible with the goals of the Town Master Plan for this area. And I hope that the Planning Commission will consider our long history with this site and know that we have made every effort to create a project that will complement the town's strategy in order to create something Parker can be proud of. We come before you tonight with a thoroughly thought-out land use plan that both staff and we support, and I thank you in advance for your consideration.
And with that, I will go through a couple more slides. Next slide, please. Good evening, Planning Commissioners and staff. My name is Bill Maher, I'm a planner and landscape architect with Norris Design. And as part of the project team, I'm happy to be here tonight to bring these applications to you for your consideration. This rezoning and minor development plat has been, as Ryan mentioned, a collaboration with the city staff for a number of years to support the town's vision for mixed-use at this site, realize the vision for Parker Road. We really compliment you on your forward-thinking plans for this area for the Town of Parker. As you know, the site has been zoned for over 20 years and remained undeveloped, as Ryan alluded to. And we really believe the rezoning, as recommended by staff and plating, will result in development that will align with the town's goals. There are many factors that support this. As Carolyn pointed out, the high visibility along Parker Road. The site has really good access to arterial roads, which will provide good access for residential uses and commercial uses. Next slide, please. And the context of the surrounding area. It really supports the development of mixed-use, which you all have recognized in your approved policies and plans. The presence of pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure within this area will support our mixed-use development. Nearby medical facilities to the northeast, the future residential, as you see outlined in yellow on this slide, is an indication of emerging neighborhoods in this area. And goods and services, there's a full-service grocery, as you're aware, to the south of the site. An ample open space along Cherry Creek and along Baldwin Gulch, which will provide opportunities for active lifestyles for young and old that eventually will be residing at this location. So with that, all of these assets really support and complement a mixed-use development. We're really excited about the potential this development will support and the adjacent areas support the development. Next slide. And as Ryan pointed out, this project, we believe, is in compliance with many of the town's policies, as Carolyn indicated in her staff report, the master plan, Parker Road corridor study, and your zoning criteria of your community. Next slide. And in summary, the development will ensure high-quality design standards. We work very closely with staff to craft design standards that exceed the current requirements of the town. And we're excited about that because that will ensure a cohesive development throughout this site. And this site provides a great opportunity for housing, as I indicated before, for young and old to take advantage of the adjacent uses, the open space. All of these factors really point to why mixed-use is really important and the best and highest use at this location. Next slide. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have and your consideration.
Okay. Planning Commissioners, I'll just go down the roll and call your name, and if you have any questions, you can go ahead with that. Eliana?
I have none at this time.
Okay. Rich?
I do not have any questions.
Eric?
No questions, thank you.
John?
Can we expand on the type of multifamily you're looking at and the size? What are you actually looking for the goal? Is it going to be more apartment-type, more attached dwelling-type? And is it going to be more for family dwelling or single people?
So the multifamily hasn't really been determined at this point beyond the zoning that allows a certain number of units. There's been no, as you know, that's an unbuildable tract at the moment, and it will have to be replatted before any development can happen there. However, development will have to be limited to what's allowed within the PD. On the other hand, could be less than what's allowed in the PD, we really don't know. And that is actually the reason why it's a tract and wasn't plotted into a lot is because this project underwent a lot of changes, the last of which was the addition of the residential lots. And that piece of it is still, we haven't got all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted. Staff recommended to the applicant that they go ahead and go forward and get the zoning and the plating done as this project has been in the pipeline for a very long time, so.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn.
Ruth Ann?
I just want to confirm, the dwelling units are capped at 175 total?
That's correct.
Okay. And is there a timeline for doing the the commercial retail versus the residential? How long do you see this process taking to build out? Just generally.
I'm gonna let the applicant answer that one.
Hi, this is Ryan. We're hoping that it actually begins fairly quickly. We'd like to, you know, we've got some interested users, and it's generally they have to go, you know, endure their own site plan process and get their own approvals, but hopefully within a year.
Thank you.
Kim?
I have one question, and I know this will go along with the site plan, but I'm assuming there will be some internal roads for the residential portion of the, kind of, that will separate the commercial and the residential?
Yes. You're right, it will go with the site plan because they don't really know exactly what the layout's gonna be, where the buildings are gonna be, where the roads are gonna be, where the landscaping's gonna be at this point. But that will be provided as part of the site plan, and it will have to meet all of the town's requirements.
Okay, any further questions for Carolyn or the applicant?
No.
No, okay. Hearing none. We will move on to, as this is a public hearing, this is the time when citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. The use of video conference technology can be challenging when inviting public comment, therefore, to help us proceed in organized fashion, we request that you use the raise-your-hand feature to indicate you would like to speak. We will acknowledge speakers in the order they are received. When you are acknowledged for your turn to speak, we request that you introduce yourself by stating your name and address and speak respectfully. Your comments are limited to three minutes. And with that, we will open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Rosemary, do we have any hands raised?
There are no raised hands.
Okay. Then we will close the public hearing portion of the meeting. Are there any further, any questions, any more questions for applicant or Carolyn?
Yes, I have one question.
Okay.
Of the multifamily residential area, how much is designated? How many acres are designated for that?
It's eight point, help me out, guys. Eight point two acres, I think.
And estimated about 175 units?
Correct.
Okay.
Not estimated, that is the cap. You cannot have more than that many units.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Further questions? Hearing none, then we will close the public hearing at 7:24. And we'll have Planning Commissioner discussion, and we'll just start. Eliana?
I don't see any real obstacles or challenges, so I'm, you know, it's a great presentation, you're thinking about the future of the town and the growth, so I'm in favor of it.
Rich?
Well, you know, due to the significant changes in the area and other areas or properties being rezoned recently, I think the request to rezon complies with the standards and the plan, proposed plan, development zoning. And I think it'll develop the, allow for more development opportunities there, so. And I think all the nine criteria have been met so far, so I'm for it.
Eric?
I don't have much to add, other than I'm happy to see that corner being developed. I'm in full support.
Then, John?
I'm real pleased to see a diverse commercial piece coming onto that corner. The auto plazas, although they bring a lot of business in, they tend to be just big pieces of asphalt and large buildings. This should give us a little more variety of business for our residents. And as Rich said, it does meet the nine criteria, so I'm very excited to see this come on board. I would like to hopefully see the multifamily more in the shared-type home, if possible, when the developer gets to that point as opposed to apartment houses.
Okay, Ruth Ann?
I'm also supportive of this development. I'm also very happy about it coordinating well with the Parker Road reimagining that we've been working on. And I'm hopeful that this will help continue to give that a boost towards making Parker Road a little better for people who drive through and visit. So I am in support of this. I, there's a couple of, I'm hoping this is our last PD that we have to do.
Yeah.
And I recognize that, you know, the new zoning stuff isn't in place yet, so we have to do a PD. But I'm hopeful that this will conform well with the zoning overlay that we would hope to do at some point in the future.
Kim?
With the way the area is going, kind of the development that's surrounding it, I think it's a much better fit, rather than an auto plaza, so I agree with John. And the fact that it does conform to the nine criteria, it seems like a pretty good spot to put it. I'm for it.
Okay, I certainly concur with my fellow Commissioners and see this as a good and the highest use of that corner. And I'm looking forward to that being developed. So if there's no further discussion, do we have a motion?
I will move on the first item. I move to the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve an ordinance to delete certain property from the PD Plan Development known as Parker Auto Plaza.
I second.
It's kind of hard, but John, seconded by Eliana. We're good, that we move to approve this first motion. We'll take the roll. Eliana?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Eric? Eric?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Ruth Ann?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Gary Poole, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next motion?
On the second motion, I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve an ordinance for the Parker and Pine Plan Development Guide and Map.
Second.
It's been seconded by, or motion by John, seconded by Rich this time. And I'll call the roll again. Eliana?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Ruth Ann?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Gary Poole, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Motion passes unanimously. Last one.
On item C, I move the Planning Commission recommend town council approve the Parker and Pine Minor Development Plat, subject to the condition in staff's report.
Second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Eric, that the Planning Commission recommend town council approve the Parker and Pine Minor Development Plats, subject to the conditions and condition in staff's report. Eliana?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Ruth Ann?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Gary Poole, aye. That motion also passes unanimously. All right, well done, commissioners. Are there any items from staff? Bryce or Rosemary?
Yes, one item. Can I go? Okay. Sorry, so the one item I have is, tonight, was Carolyn Parkinson's last presentation before Planning Commission. And she is retiring, and I'd like to make sure and personally and professionally thank her for her efforts for the Town of Parker. She has been a great member of our team, and we will certainly miss her.
Thanks for all you've done, Carolyn.
Carolyn.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure.
Please, please do me a favor. What's that? Enjoy yourself.
Oh, I will.
Good for you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. As I mentioned, my name is Bill Maher, and I've worked with Carolyn for the past four years on this project, but on many others. And we have thoroughly enjoyed working with her and her professionalism and guidance has been instrumental to our success. So keep in touch, Carolyn. We'll miss you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maher.
Thank you.
All right, Rosemary?
So I just wanted to remind all the planning commissioners that we will have the new planning commissioner orientation on Thursday, June 18th, at 4:30 via Zoom. The one appointee that is scheduled to be appointed at the June 15th Town Council meeting will be in person with Bryce and Jim Meloni, the town attorney. So can I just have a quick roll? How many people plan on attending the orientation?
I will be there. Are you feeding us? I'm kidding.
Whatever you're serving in your house, Eliana, you can have it.
I just, I figured you'd have Grubhub make stops, you know, at this house.
Sounds like Eliana's going to feed us all, so that's where I'll be.
I'm sorry, I just couldn't, I could not, I just could not pass that up, guys, okay?
We're having budget reductions here, folks, come on now.
So Eliana, Ruth Ann, okay.
I'll be there.
I'll be on.
Kim? Eric, did you say yes?
Eric?
I think you, Eric?
Looks like he's disappeared.
This is Rich, I'll be on.
Oh, Rich, you will? Okay. Perfect. Susan?
Yes, I will be there.
Okay.
Here.
Perfect, all right.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you, Rosemary. Eric said yes.
Yep, I'm here. Yes, I'll be there. Can you hear me?
Awesome, okay.
All right. So anything else, Rosemary?
I'm here, yes, I'll be there.
No, that's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Well, seeing nothing else, we will adjourn the planning commission meeting at 7:33.